It'll be taxing, but hopefully we get the word out. Fire Department's Facebook page and website both reflect the ban and restrictions. Additionally, you saw that we have banners up through town. We're taking applications for our next recruit class. We will take these applications until the end of November, at which point we do the background checks, we run arrest records, and then hopefully we'll have six to 10, and we'll be able to start the academy in January. So if you know anyone that has ever thought about volunteering, becoming a firefighter, becoming a DNT, send them our way. Besides that, is there anything else that we can do for you? There you are. Sorry, sir.
As you know, you don't need to learn about.
Yes, sir.
Our service until 48.
Yes, sir.
Why did they change the curriculum to where you have to be either high school graduate or have GED to be a firefighter?
Once upon a time, all the fire service information was printed and was put out on a fourth grade level, same as newspapers. But in 2017, they passed requirements that all of our training and all of our classes have to have testing procedures. And it's all based upon what the National Fire Service puts out as minimum requirements. They write it at a high school level. So the requirement has been, you must have a GED or you must have a high school diploma.
What about if you're already certified?
If you're already certified, they are not going to make it retrograde. But what we tell people is that if you do not have a GED, the fire department will assist you in getting it. So while you're in the academy, then we get you enrolled in a GED program as well. And we've had four persons that have benefited from that. It's a good feeling when they pass it. They're pretty proud. But it is required that we have now.
Somebody who's already certified and in the system, you know, that you should be grandfathered into.
Once you're in the system, they do not make it retro. You are actually grandfathered in. But all new applicants must have a GED or a high school diploma.
So that's always a change to somebody new that comes in and never had a degree or whatever. But like if a person like me wanted to get a foster part out or whatever, would I be able to come into your apartment or would I have to?
Well, we'll find some way of getting you involved. But yes, at that point, if you're already certified, you're not going to need a GED. If you've got further questions on it, you can contact me a little bit later. Be glad to sit down and make you a bad cup of coffee.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else, folks? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Under new business, did you have something?
I did. I have two ordinances, 282-2020, this will be a first reading, and 283-2020. It's a small economic recovery, small business economic recovery fund grant.
Can we just give a brief summary?
Actually, no, I can't do a brief summary. Sean, you want to do a brief summary for me?
While he's finding that type of law, has the lawyer looked at that? And is it legit and are we good to go?
Actually, yes. Didn't you do these ordinances? You did not.
I mean, any lawyer did, just not this one. I mean, there are lawyers that have obviously passed it because this is legislation that's been used for sales, is it? For personal, I think it's for sales.
But you looked though.
I did. I mean, it was sent to me, but I.
It's good to go, it's legit?
It's a legit ordinance.
You don't have a problem doing it?
It's about policy. This is not legal law. And clearly, you can enact this ordinance. It's just about whether you guys, how do you want to handle it?
This would be great for our small businesses or like Norman Case, Lori Best, or B and D Mo, or people that were, the businesses were so small that they couldn't have really applied for the PPE money. It's a grant that don't have to pay back. They tell us how much, you know, with, they supply us with their credentials and employees, things like that. And then we're told how much of a grant that we can give them. The city holds the money, I think it's 260,000, am I correct?
No, let me explain.
We got to spend it first.
You got to spend it first.
We got to spend it first.
The council approves and we would have to amend the budget and order to give, you know, we would have a committee, a board of two council people. Chamber of Commerce Director said she would be willing to do that. And Julie said she would sit on that board. The Treasurer and I would sit on that board. We would get together, there's an application process, there is an application, if you guys want to look at it later to see what's on there. And what happens is, you know, each grant that's granted, Kritten pays out of their, you know, what they approved with the budget, and then we send that into the CARES Act. Really fun. Just like we did the PPE for the mask and the gowns and so forth, the $12,000. It's the same procedure, it's just a basic application. It goes to the local government in Frankfurt, and then they decide to give that back. There is a possibility, you know, that we wouldn't get it back, but the majority for sales, they did get their money back because this is something to jumpstart the economy back up and assist the small businesses located within our city that's affected by the COVID-19.
And it's only the businesses that are still open, correct?
No. Like Blossom Basket closed, if she was to open back up, she would have to agree to be open back up 12 months. Thornberrys, if they're closed down, my assumption, if they decide that they want to open back up, they would have to agree in the application that they would stay open 12 months. Okay? So this is something that's trying, you know, that we've tried to do to jumpstart and help out the local businesses. It's strictly up to you guys. This would be a first reading. We would have to have a second reading on this if you guys want to do so. It's, this is, here's the application assistance. I did check into Danny about the churches. Unfortunately, the churches, they've had that question before, is not included in this.
Okay.
Can we talk for a few minutes about the reimbursement process?
Sure.
So if I heard you right, Kritten has amended budget. We, through an application and a board process, award the money to various businesses.
Right.
But to get our money back, we would have to have some proof, would we not, that the businesses actually did what they said in their application?
Other than, this is the application here. Other than some restrictions as far as what we would ask from the businesses would be, have you not been able to pay your rent or mortgage? How much water, sewer, electric, gas that you've spent? How much insurance? Anybody that's received benefits already, they cannot apply for this application. Okay, what does that say?
Let me ask my question again because I didn't do a good job.
No, you did. Let me finish that. The application goes into Frankfurt with the receipts of everything that we've spent as a grant to all, to the businesses.
Okay. The application goes in and the receipt is what we've given out, not the receipts that the company has given us a year from now.
Right. Now, they would have to provide back to, you know, back to the board some proof that they have been, you know, affected by this.
So the term lag would be really the application and whatever Frankfurt's time is in processing that.
That's right.
I could tell you it took two months to get back the GED money.
Okay, so we're not suspending that money for a year or something like that? Okay.
And I think one thing I know about the two months was there's also a very new channel of communication that the mayor has now. So that same persons, that group would be the same channel of communication back and forth. So I think the process is cleaner as well now, what I've seen since I've been here. So it's gave and it's reprocessed.
There's a list that we have to go by as well. There's a preparatory agreement. There's also the resolution that I talked to Alex about that he's getting together and.
Can we send that in? Can we send it in piecemeal or do we have to wait for a lomp to send it back to Frankfurt?
That's a good question.
I read it was, as you please.
As.
I'll verify. I read for Frankfurt that.
Obviously, you don't want to send everyone, but there needs to be, if there's discreet lumps, because you might do that throughout the year.
We got till December 31st. And hopefully they'll, you know, they'll do this again and have that for them.
Also, we're done with the application by the end of the calendar year.
We need to have these applications with the board meeting, two volunteers from city council, the board meeting, get this going, get this, get this application out to the businesses. And we try to, we try to do it quickly. You know, we don't have a lot of businesses, so we're in better shape than a lot of cities, but there is a lot of small businesses here that could really benefit from this.
Well, and what's scary is it's still an issue, right? So the daycare down the street had to close down two weeks because they had an exposure to a COVID-19 positive, not a staff member or child, but, I mean, so it's happening still. We're still being hindered by.
Lex Kitty College is really not in the city, but say this little daycare over here, I'm sure they're struggling, you know, because they hadn't been able to pay their workers.
How do we make sure they're going to spend their money on what they said they were going to spend it on and like they don't buy Corvette or something like that? How are we going to make sure that they spend it for their employees, spend it for their insurance, for their utilities and all this stuff? How are you going to know that they spend it for what they said they wanted the loan for? That's what I'm worried about because if they don't, we're going to be SOL. We're not going to get the money back from the government because they didn't spend it on what they were supposed to spend it on.
That's not the requirement. So you'll have to validate to the receipt process federally.
So they could basically spend it on a Corvette if they wanted to.
Well, that would be the same like law enforcement. You guys got the CARES Act funding to law enforcement. Are they making you guys send in what you spend it on?
It came through the county, I don't know. I mean, I know the judge exec and the fiscal court submitted that and we, and the county was reimbursed. I don't know the amount of money that they were reimbursed, but it, I said it was going to go for this and have got the money reimbursed, so.
Wasn't it like 422,000?
I don't, I don't know the number. I really don't know the number off the top of my head.
What's been the recovery experience with the cities that have done this? What percentage has had any recovery? Or what percentage has had any loss of recovery?
The connection I have with for sales, I mean, it's been great, you know, but they was awarded more money. We were awarded 280,000, so we spent 12,200 something on PPE.
Great, meaning we got all their money back or they got part of their money back?
I can make a phone call on that.
And do we have any broader experience in this for sales? I mean, do we know how many cities have done this and that?
Frankfurt gave me the breakdown and the cities that, that was one of them. There's other cities that. When you talk about the local government, there's very few things that Kritten could have used that, you know, this, these funds for. One of them was a small business, PPE, law enforcement, which we contract out. If they advised, if you, the application for them, if you, you could, you can use that money for law enforcement, but if you've already allocated that into the budget, you cannot, you cannot apply for that.
I'm just curious as to what's been the loss percentage and that sort of. Because even if they say they don't have to do it 12 months, if they bankrupt, they don't have to. I'm just curious as to what, you know, what the law.
I can give them a call and we can talk about it again Thursday evening.
Mr. Martin, I think you asked us more about can churches who apply this? And the question back was, we cannot. I'm sorry.
In a minute, should be about today from last month. The way the money is transferred is completely opposite of what you're saying today.
Would we?
Monies will be provided from the state of Kentucky to the city of Kritten, and then the city will distribute the funds.
No, that's not correct.
What page is that on?
That'd be nice.
I have no idea. Looks like that.
He just mistyped that, but we explained that at the September 1st meeting, you know, we, that's not how that works, just like PPE, we paid for that. They didn't send us a check first for 1,000. We'll change that. It'd make things a lot easier if we could do it that way. Okay, we can move on to the Oakwood.
Can I do the new business for the subdivision watch safety thing? That's okay. You guys can call it whatever you think. I want to hear some input. Basically, Todd did a real good job with some of the other council people talking to the subdivisions over off of Kritten Mountain Drive, where people shared their concerns, lighting, stop signs, speeding, all this stuff. Since there's already got some rapport there with people talking, I'd like to see if, again, I'm just shouting out this word, y'all can see what you want. Subdivision watch safety committee, where one person or more than one person, if they're interested in each subdivision, it can even be Oakwood, it can be Bingham Lane, it could be anybody, where they have concerns about issues, speeders. You've talked about water rep, all the speeders all the time on that. So, I mean, you would be a good one that you know where the people are.
Write me down.
Well, what I'm saying is I'm willing to come in to council meeting 30 minutes before each meeting. If we can get it put on the website, that there's people that would like to come. Again, I don't know what y'all think of what you would like to call this. And you've already got a good leg, you've already ran up, met a lot of people, Todd, over there and that, that subdivision. I'd like to see if we could do that. And if you're interested, come talk to me. Not this Thursday's meeting, but the next meeting in November. And I'd like to see what we can do to share, because you got to call law enforcement. And if you see something going on, you call. You got to know. And don't be scared to call 911. I called 911 this morning going to work. The garage was open behind the post office this morning. The door's standing wide open. I've never seen them standing wide open before, and I, so I don't know if anybody got in there and got anything or what. But you see something, you got to call. You just can't play ostrich and put your head in the sand and go, somebody's got to do something. So I'll be here the next month, 30 minutes before. Put it on the website, please, Todd.
I'd like to be included in that.
Come 30 minutes before the meeting.
You got it.
And you can call it whatever you want, all sounds good. We can change it later on, but neighborhood, subdivision, street, watch, safety, whatever you want. I'm up for everything.
Just be careful with the corn there. You have a meeting before the meeting, just.
Well, we're only going to be talking, we're not going to be talking about taxes. We're not going to be talking about anything. We're going to be talking about what things are going on in the committee. The signs are working. For example, the signs are working and we got, I forgot your name, in the very back with the black mask.
Name?
Yeah, I forgot your name. I'm sorry. He told me about a street light was out. I sent a message to the mayor and Sean, then the street light got ditched. So if we can do things like that and get things going, I'd like it. But yeah, you're right, can't discuss other city business. We've only talked speeding issues.
I've been doing that for two years. You can just not start.
Well, actually, I've tried to get a watch party going about crime issues and about the people running through the yards and nobody's interested. So I'm kind of twisting people's arms to see if we can get something involved. And I'm just talking unless anybody else has anything.
Where are we on the speed bumps there in Harbors?
Where are we on the speed bumps?
Now, we got to know the definition of what we're, what do you call the ones that union, Sean?
Speed bumps.
We want bumps. We don't want bumps that look like somebody's doing some hopping.
Well, and they want to be, when they, when Mayor Livinggood was here before, we did put the speed humps. They were probably about that tall. I think what we're looking for is a little bit more wider than anything. Because the other ones before, sure, I mean, I can see where people were getting a little upset, but.
Hey, you don't hit, you don't go fast very often.
That's true. But what typically happened was, you would love to think that people would go across to crawl. They didn't. So they did some damage to the car, since the city, you know, it became an issue, they got rid of it.
He was a living good.
Oh, word!
I was just going to tell Mr. Robinson that that was Mr. Riley to put the speed bumps in and not me.
Wow. We were there. How you doing, Sean?
I think Todd in Greenvue, you know, was handling that information. I was, I was told it was handed off to me, but no, it's not handed off to me. That was something that the Greenvue committee was, was looking into. So we do have some concerns about the stop signs and things like that. I've been working, I haven't done this in a week. He has, he has replaced all the stop signs and speed limit signs in Greenvue. We have ordered some reflectors for those stop signs and the speed limit sign. We are going tomorrow to speak with the gentleman in Boone County about getting ordered more stop signs and replacing the pink stop signs or stop signs that's missing and so forth. Also, get the price of those and we have to sign a, get an invoice, don't we, JD? With the guy from Boone County, Mr. Wright. And so any more questions about the stop signs or speed limit signs? We have some budget concerns for 2020, 2021.
Two came out. The sanitation number, for example, on a budget of 100,000. The sanitation costs for Republic every month is just over 9,000. So we're going to be about 10,000 to 12,000 over budget this year on that one line item itself. It's on the appropriations section. They have a 100,000 dollar budget for the year. Like I said, it's going to be 9100, 9100 a month for Republic, so we're just going to exceed it. So we're, we're looking at an amendment for that. And then, of course, you didn't discuss Brass Eagle or Oakwood project yet, but that's also, we know that's a change coming from the amendments' standpoints. And then Danny mentioned more about the issue with the equipment section as well. So I just want to bring your attention that we're looking at amendments already, so to speak, to the budget as well. With that said, CARES Act, also amendment to the budget. So if we do one amendment that encompasses all of these, we can do that, knock it out right away. It's a, it's a fair amount.
So real quick, it was Republican waste fee?
Yeah.
And what else?
It's a Republican sanitary line item, so to speak. It's basically section, the appropriations section, page two of the budget. It's sanitation, oil and wood trash, 100,000. We'll probably get about 110,000 for the year. The cost can be pretty, pretty close, or not nominal, but pretty close every month. Maybe from 9,000 to 9,300. Oakwood's one, of course, for 135 on budget. And then you mentioned before about the equipment purchases. Just want to bring it up.
And then CARES Act?
Yeah, I've got an amendment as well.
I want to make some phone calls on that. I'm glad that Jim brought that up. I want to make sure that they, they didn't have any problems in the other cities. Get that back first.
That's why I wanted, like I said, I wanted to make sure the lawyer looked at it, the verbiage was good, we're good to go, we're protecting ourselves, but we're just not going to become a lung shark or something like that without getting anything back.
I don't think there's an issue with the verbiage. It's if they're, the process, they're the ones that's choosing, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to send this back to you. So that's, you know, that's my question. If they were digging on us. I'd like to bring up Oakwood project and Brass Eagle. We need to make a decision if we're going to hire Brass Eagle to complete the Oakwood project and go ahead and get started ordering all those storm drains and so forth. Also, looking at to approximately about 40,000 amendment to the budget. I think we already have some engineering costs in the budgets.
Where are we with his bid?
About 37,000, 37, 40,000.
Forgive me, but I wasn't at that meeting. How much was his total bid?
It was 159. 159.53.
When was that dated?
Well, he went back, he went down from his 222, right?
Yes. Yes, go ahead, Sean.
Well, I know that.
So he went down 63,000 from a second bid.
Okay, he, he gave us a bid of 222,000 and after talking with him and telling him, you know, hey, that's, I don't think council's going to pass that. He voluntarily took the bid back down to 159.53, which is excellent.
Same scope.
Same scope of work, same everything. The difference was he had added on the city completing the driveways with concrete, and that's what made it so much more. And I said, that wasn't part of the deal.
You're only replacing how they are right now?
Yes.
Travel? Blacktop?
Of its kind, you know, it's going to be of its concrete, yes, of its ground, yes.
Well, if he put in a bid for 222, go with that number. Can, is there any trouble we can get into on taking a lower number? Since he bid X, can we take?
Well, the difference was that he included something in there that we didn't want to do. And he misunderstood at the meeting we had that night. So it wasn't really that he was, he would, he had added to that the concrete price and the labor for those driveways, and that wasn't part of the scope.
He's accepting the contract.
He's accepting it.
You're saying we're good.
Also, the performance bond is, that was 159 for the total, but also the performance bond was around 4, 4,500. So we got to include that in there to protect, protect us.
I'm just concerned with, he put in the 222 bid, and now we're going to accept a lower number. I, I mean, if it's legal, fine, but it just doesn't seem like that's how the bid process works. I wouldn't think.
It's not like it's supposed to add or suck a meeting.
He was in the meeting we had, and he, he misunderstood, you know, that. He had, he gave us a scope of work and then he, he put back in there that we was going to replace all those. I think he just misunderstood when we started talking in that, in that last meeting, that we was going to concrete all those driveways. So it really hasn't changed.
But the number that he turned in?
But he was doing the driveways.
Right. No, I'm not saying he was doing something wrong. I'm just afraid of, this is the bid I put in. Well, now I'm going to do this.
I would be worried too if we had more bids, but nobody else put in.
I'd be worried if it went the other way.
Well, when he signs the contract, though, that value of that contract would be that specific price. I mean, whatever his bid is will be attached that time. When he signs that contract, the city, that's the price.
You went to vote on that tonight?
We need to vote, we're going to go ahead, but then we're going to have to vote Thursday night on amending the budget. Are we, are we going to?
Well, do we have to? We don't have to vote on amending the budget right now because the fiscal year's not over and we haven't paid Brass Eagle any money yet. So we really don't have to amend the budget on Thursday, in my personal opinion.
Resolution authorizing the contract.
We're just doing the contract. Debbie, you're representing everybody on Oakwood, right?
Absolutely.
I need you to please let everybody know, in my personal opinion, that they need to get with Brass Eagle and talk to them and pay out of their own money and talk to them about putting in a culvert pipe at the end of their driveway because water runs downhill. And we're pretty much going to be finished with this project. And since they're replacing the driveways that they dig up, they need to see about getting a culvert pipe and talking to Brass Eagle and saying, if I, would you put this in for us and we pay you out of our pocket money? Would you please share that to all the residents since you're doing excavating on that street? Find out what the cost would be to put a culvert pipe in everybody's driveway because there's one house that has a legitimate culvert pipe, there's another one has a four-inch PVC pipe, and water will go downhill. That's the worst enemy. So would you do that for me, please?
I could ask the.
Well, I just, it's because when we're through with this project, I don't think Kritten and city council can do anything else for any water issues on that street. You're going to take care of the grave yourself and your yards.
In the original design that Caliber had, and I haven't seen the final design, had a two-inch step at each driveway and a concrete apron. And that was.
And that was to be in lieu of culvert pipes.
Why worry about the water running down people's yards? Because this is, this, this street's not going to take anything, not going to take care of any water on.
From the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill, where, was a curve, but at the driveway entrances themselves, which was the low spot, there's going to be a two inch step.
Was that included in the last, was that included in the last year though?
To the point here, we've got to have a, maybe we can have a reasonableness change since Caliber's out of the picture.
Well, he's not, he's, he's working with us.
He's still working?
He's going to retire, yeah, I said he's retired, but he's still working with us and they may not, you know, we, we need to spread this on him, I need to talk with them first to make sure they're interested, but, uh, yeah, you know, we can talk about that.
In, in parallel, not stopping what we're talking about, you know, but if there's a red flag, we need to know it.
So was that two inches included in the last thing that was bid? Was the two inches included in the last bid?
From the top of the hill down, each driveway would have a two inch step.
I, I understand, was that in the last bid?
It was.
No, I'm asking, I don't know.
I haven't seen it since the first design, so I don't know.
So we don't know?
Well, I don't know, but he's the engineer, let him look at it, he's in it.
Hey, all right, come on, guys.
He, he's the engineer guy, not me, so I'm just asking.
I'll have Mr. Carr look at that, I'll, I'll have you look at this, um, one day, maybe Friday, if you guys are free anytime.
There should be a, a driveway de, detailed drawing, you know, and that's typical for all of them.
We had a scope.
Eighteen inch apron, six inch, six inch, six inch curve, two inch, eight, two inch rise at each driveway. Was what the original design was.
Which should take care of the water running down the street.
Down the street only.
Will not take care of the water running down people's yards.
No.
Okay, because I want Kritten to fix this right and then pretty much, I don't think we can do anything else after we do this paving job. Everybody's responsible for their own grade and their own yard.
There's a gentleman back there with the same.
I, I've missed quite a few, if you all know, so what is the, the purpose of Oakbrook? Is it, you, Oakwood, I'm sorry, I'm just, are you having a problem with drains where water's washing away your backyard?
And front yard.
And front yards, because that's the same thing we're having down at Harvesters.
But I, we feel like that most of our water that we're having issues with is coming off the road.
The main road.
The main road.
Yeah, well, that's what we said because I think.
If there's a curb there, that's going to divert that water or keep that water in that road, it can straight on down through that pipe and on out. Now, we're going to have water in our yards, but not like it is now.
Yeah, because see, what happened was, and I think we've had this conversation probably five, ten years ago with Harvesters. When they added concrete or blacktop to blacktop, now the blacktop is higher than the ground. So when you curve it, we are getting all of this water that's coming off of Violet Road into Hicks and Mann's and then coming down.